Morning, Natau. In the absence of a chair and a deputy chair, bit of feedback on that. And understanding order 14.2, to continue the meeting, we need to appoint an acting chair to chair today's meeting. Do we have any nominations?
I'll nominate, Mimi.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Puhi. All those in favour?
Aye.
It's my pleasure to hand over to you, councillor Rolla Sten.
Didn't we miss the part where you asked me whether I accept that nomination?
No, no.
Mari, is that written?
No.
I'll tena, Tato. I'll hua atu te rako ki a koe, auntyu ki te whakatufera, Tato.
No mai hara mai tatau, ki ruka ta tatau marai, etu mai raite hera. Ki ruka te whakarooni, ki ngai wata tatau kauni hera, ena honai, etaninu mukata. Gere, me iu ai ratau. Ei huaa nga mana vata matau, tama tava iu tapu me nga nenu ma. Sekai rukira matau, iroto na harane, tanga hea, na kino e mahi, tare, wata kino ratau katua. Whakarooni ki uau tau, kauni hera, na koe hera, kino rukira, rukira, kia tatau katua. Kua te maalai lo, haeta taka mai, aire a, ake ne a, kio tatau.
Tena koe auntyu, mo to karekiu ki te whakatufera tenai hui. Mo te Tangatafenewa Tooranga Council Joint Committee i tenai ata. Te hau kaanga, tenai te mehi araha ki a koto, mo to pofiri i tenai ata. Goreira, nuu i te mehi ki a koto.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Tangatafenewa Tooranga Council Joint Committee meeting of Wednesday, 3rd of December 2025. Firstly, in terms of health and safety, if the alarm sounds, please wake your way to the nearest emergency exit and gather and take further instructions from there. Please be aware that this meeting is being livestreamed and the video will be publicly available on YouTube. Members, could you please remember to speak clearly into your microphone and only one speaker at a time for clarity? Please turn off or turn your mobile phones on to silent. Thank you. So morning, everybody, and welcome to our hui, official hui. First and foremost, I'll call for any apologies.
Me mahe.
Me mahe.
Me ari.
Anthony Fisher. Ari Walker. Okay, we have three apologies. Could I have a mover and a seconder for those apologies? Deputy Mayor, Mahtere has moved and seconded. All those in favour say aye or kau? Aye, kioa. Thank you very much. As you can see on our agenda, just going through our agenda today, and very soon we'll deal with the public forum, which I understand there is no members of the public speaking? No. So we don't have anything on the public forum? Are there any acceptance of late items? Kau? Any confidential business to be transferred into the open? Kau? Any change to the order of business? Oh, that's what I like, is a chair, nice and simple. So our next item is the confirmation of minutes of the meeting held on the 17th of September 2025, held at Hudi'a Marae. Could I have a mover and a seconder from those that were in attendance for those minutes? Please be accepted. Moved by Mahtere, seconded by Destiny. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Sorry. Were you going to say something?
Yeah. Now I'll take any matters arising from those minutes, please.
Yeah, were you going to speak to it, Kieran?
Yeah.
Just the amendment to the minutes?
Okay, yeah.
I'm sorry, in the last meeting, there was a points raised around the issues report that had been mentioned, so took it and moved it. While it wasn't in the minutes, we have done that with the issue report. So it's around adding a bit more clarity around who's responsible for some of these interventions moving forward.
Go play.
Yeah, I think it's just to say that we are collectively wanting to be proactive with making sure that the work plan doesn't just get it to be along the list and to have some another addition when we were talking about that was that we'll try to have in a different colour the changes between meetings so we can actually see what has happened on that work plan.
Any other comment matters arising out of those minutes? I think I took the already moved, and do I still need to do anything more? They carried it? Okay. Next item is any, is it the next one? Declaration of conflicts of interest? Are there any declarations of any conflicts that anyone wants to raise? If you become aware of any during the course of today, please just make me aware during the meeting. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the presentation from Ngatikahu ki Mangatau, Mangatau 2B 2A Trust, Mangatau Papa More Blocks and Corporation. Understand that's U50. We allow for around 30 minutes. And there, if required, kai ake.
Thank you very much. First of all, this presentation between our three legal entities up here that actually sort of run the place. Mangatau Papa More Blocks, Marae Trust, Mangatau 2B 2A, and Ngatikahu Atamapahore Trust. They own five acres of quarry up there. I'll, I'll, oh, sorry. I'll start off with our pepea for our marae up here, you know, which is pretty important. Ko mangamana te manga, ko te tau mataa niku, te tūranga waiwai, ko te tahuna o rangatoua te moana, ko te waiu o te tohura te pona, ko mangatau te marai. Ko tamapahore te tupuna fari, ko nga tuahine te farihui, ko nga tikahu rau, ko nga ti tahuora, nga hapu, ko nga portaki rau, ko ngaitarangi nga iwi, ko tahu kino wan te karawa. Karen texts me last night and asked me to clarify between Ngatikahu and Ngaportaki and Ngaitarangi. Basically, Ngatikahu and Ngati tahuora are hapu, they're whakapapa directly to Ngaportaki, and Ngaportaki in their claim, claimed 11 hapu, which were, so these two hapu were part of it. Reason why Ngatikahu has been, I'll say, running with Ngaitarangi is because they actually gave us the money to buy our quarry, to buy the five acres back. Took a while to get the money. Twelve, 13 years of scrambling around, nobody give it. And then in the Ngaitarangi settlement, we got the money out of them. And so I was just showing loyalty. They give us the money, so it's a political engagement between us and Ngaitarangi. I could delve into why a iwi and eponymous ancestors and all that, but basically, it's a political alliance there and we tuturu whakapapa to Ngaportaki. And so I consider Ngaportaki a iwi, but it's not an iwi under the EMAIO status. It's mandated iwi organisation like Tronut and Ngaitarangi Nui Inc. But because we have a working hapu here, we have a working marae, I hassle spent just about every day I see him and say, you're going to put Ngaportaki up for an iwi because like I said, we have our two marae, you know, two hapu here. And might be time for us to step away from Ngaitarangi. We had, you know, we went to a settlement meeting, but that's another story. There's many families here for Ngatikahu. Obviously, my McLeod faunu, Tipiwa'i, the Rortas, wee happies, the Tiamos, the Pukikurus, McMillans from Matakana, Roberts, the Beals, the Keegis and the Fables, you know, they're most of our Tipuki faunu from Ngatikahu. And Ngati tahuora is an ancient hapu of Ngaportaki and they include faunus from Mangatapu, Haorini, Kaitemako, Taringa Kulei, obviously, that's, you know, they're mostly Ngati tahuora here. Kaurua Road and Waitahua. And, you know, there's a lot of families in there, so I just named the regions and, yeah. The fenua that this marae stands on, Taraha McLeod, gave over the fenua for it and he was with his two brothers, my kurru, Basillas and his kurru, and the uncle waka, the youngest, took us through court and registered the marae under the two hapu that I've mentioned. You know, so they're actually registered in the Maori Land Court. I was going to have some documents here, I'll get them for reading somewhere, in my bag somewhere. You know, the certificate of title for the marae. It's one shareholder, it's Taraha. A certificate of title for this block that the whole marae stands on. It's called te tau mataa niku, a certificate of title as a, also say, a Mangatau 2. I think first of all, I'll give a small snapshot of what this marae and Ngaportaki have contributed to the city of Tooranga. It's pretty important for the councillors, you know, to know that. And I've decided every three years, when there's an election, I'm going to go through the same thing because, you know, you never know, you might get five new councillors or even one, but you actually need to know what the contribution has been. You know, for this city to get to where they are now, the third biggest in New Zealand sort of thing, biggest export port, import. It was all quarried from this mona here, all aggregate. The roads down here, a state highway that was put in in 1965. And so the original aggregate from this mona, all the way to the forestry blocks and Rortihu and all that, so it could come back to the wharf. And it also built the original roading going to Auckland and also over the Kai Maias. The last job that this quarry had was for the original Harbour Bridge. When Winston Peters got it through, you know, it was one lane and we paid for it, eh, you know? And that was from 1984 to 1991, last time was quarried. You know, and like I said, it's contributed a lot to the city, so you just need to be aware of that, eh, you know, because I'll be asking for a lot today. But, you know, I think it's only fair, you know, our community has, you know, contributed quite a lot, you know, and just as a community here and then full on as Ngaportaki. Yeah, we've got the Tamanga waste pond there, you know, Ngaportaki has contributed to that, it's been put there, you know. We've been some of the biggest, I'll say, moaners about it, but not wanting it there. So I've got a plan where we might not have to use it and then I'll feel better about moaning about the zip ponds. You know, if we hook up there, well, you know, we shouldn't be moaning about it, so. But that'll come later on in my presentation. Carry on to that, I mean, yeah. But the first quarry that happened was in 1913 to 1926 for the aggregate for Main Trunk Railway Line. Started in 1913 and finished about 1926. That was the first quarry and there was no public works taking then, they just came up and took it, you know? But by the time the big takings came in, there was registration to take it and Taraha ended up being the tally clerk up there to just make sure that every time there was explosions that he'd come pick up the bones and put them in a metal box, you know, that used to hold ammunition. And he buried it around the old Udu pa where TCC helped us count the bodies in there with their ground penetrating radar. And as you can see, it was a significant mona, you know. The name says it itself, mangamana. All of Waitahua's chiefs were buried in there when they were here, ranginuis. The last internment there was in 1918 and there was a man called Rota Te Farihuiya. And he was one of the main speakers for Ngaportaki in native land court when dealing with all that land. And he's the last internment there, what they used to do. There's about, it was a grove of kalaka trees on the other side of this mona, halfway up. Oh, three quarters of the way up. And there's only about, I think about four left. And yet we used to hang the bodies there until there was only koi we left bones and then that's when the koi we were then interred into the caves. There's caves right in there, you know, and like I said, a lot of tupuna were buried in there and most of them are Waitahua and ranginuis. And a few from us, you know, once we came in here occupying the land. And like I said, it's a significant mona. The Takitimu landed out right in front of this marae here, a place called Oteira. And from the Ngaportaki narrative, Tamatea Araki Nui stepped off the waka and climbed the mona, up the mangamana and buried the moli of the giant fara fara flex. And from there on then, in our narrative, he then became Tamatea Porkei Fenua. Ranginuis, you know, they're Timbo, but, you know, two different people, but to us, he was one and the same, and that's how we got the name Porkei Fenua. That's pretty significant, you know, Oteira's a special place, you know, Tonga Tukue Iho. Tamatea also had his pa up here, buried here, ranginuis. And Kahugenoo was born here and then he ran off when, you know, fight with his brother down to Hawks Bay, you know, and, but he's from here. Had his pa here. Him and his older brother just got into a spat over a flounder. You know, the resources, eh, the group's getting bigger and, you know, the Tikang Ava, you're supposed to chuck the first one back. He took it and, yeah, so got to hiding and then he took it off. That's about it. Talk about the water reservoir. Yeah, and I'll take it all as read, so I'm sort of just going off the top of my head. I've got a lot of info and needed, I want to get it out sort of thing, but. It was the early 70s, they needed a water reservoir, took it and gave us a perpetual lease. And then when my dad got in the secretary, he bought them and then got the, what the, I think the current rental is now, whatever it is. And it's been like that ever since, you know, and in Mahtere's report, she's got a local water, it's done well part there. And so I'll associate it with the reservoir here because the council needs to strengthen the reservoir to earthquake proof. And to do that, they've got to get heavy machinery up there. And the roads are no good, so they're proposing a new accessway. And the one that they've asked for, that we've sort of had a walkover, it's got two meti, yeah, it's got two 90-degree corners to make and for big machinery like that, I think, you know, it's not too good. So us, the marae, Mangatau and the hapu are proposing that you come up the Mangatau Quarry Lane way up here and go through the quarry and, you know, you'll have to fix the road on going through the quarry there, but it's a straight road, eh, no corners, so it'll be cheaper, definitely. And like I said, it's just a straight road, it makes sense, you know? And like I said, under the local waters done well, when the stage two of the wiring happens and get the pipe of water up here and then take another pipe back down here, it's not going to be very local waters done well if you go straight past the marae without servicing it. And I'm saying right here and right now, it should be for free because of all of the infrastructure we've provided. You know, and it's only for the marae, I'm not saying for a papakai or anything, I'm just saying for the marae. And that'll come in later under the emergency evacuation part of the court little because, you know, we'll have water and I'm proposing that under the local waters done well, we put two to four watering stations here, you know, in case pipes break down there and middle of the mountains, your cousins from Tipuki can come and get some water. Again, it just seems, you know, practical. And with the road, a change of accessway, like I said, it was a straight road. As you go through the quarry, I would have liked to have taken you guys up there at some stage. There's a, there's the hole there and then there's a deck and then the mona that goes up there. And that deck is perfect for a rallying place for, to put containers of food, you know, generators and all of that, tents, you know? When, I'll say, when a tsunami happens, you know, it'll be safe up there. You know, it might cost a little bit of money to put a deck on there, but, you know, it'll be worth it in the long run. I'm also suggesting at the same time that this marae, whatever, be a central communication hub for when that stuff happens. You know, so we'll need that technical stuff stored up there as well, you know, because again, when we had that last one and the whole public came up here, you know, the communications weren't all that good between us and the council and regional councils. So, you know, like having a designated central point would be good. And up here, again, makes sense to me because again, you know, the community wants to use our marae to save themselves, so, you know, again, a bit of quid pro quo, you know, and that means the infrastructure, the roading around here needs to be strengthened, especially coming up Taraha Lane. Privately owned by my cousins, you know, so we had to do some talking with them. But, you know, I know that they want the road fixed, you know, and like I said, all the roading coming around here, it's got to be strengthened to take, you know, a lot of traffic in the end. You know, and again, I'll say, when that tsunami happens. So, you know, all in all, again, will be pretty crucial for the community at large, eh, you know? Looking after them, manaking them, you know, and which we did last time and, you know, it was pretty good. We got some good comments, you know, like it was going on two years ago now, eh, something like that? When all those cars ended up here, yeah, yeah. You know, and like Mangatau have clients on Truman Lane, like Main Freight and that. And so we're working on developing a tayo, a kaiteaki ropu manned by our three legal entities. And so we plan to get our partners involved on Truman Lane, mainly for funding and because we'll do all the work, you know, and their payoff would be, you know, it would be tax-free and they'll get carbon credits for cultural ecological restorations, you know, and they like that kind of stuff on their walls, you know, those kinds of things. So, you know, that's on the go and part of the whole gambit of issues that we could actually all put together. You know, and I know I'm asking a lot and they've got to get us through your Joe Ratepayer. Soon as they hear the figure, man, you go, I can hear all the moans now. Oh, hey man, I only meant straight up bay, you know? Now, we also have, where am I? No, 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 no. Here, here. I'll talk about these lands down by the Sandhurst Bridge. Sandhurst coming back to our little bridge, it's about twenty-five acres and that's zone commercial. You know, and it's going to need a lot of infrastructure to, to be able to operate, you know. Maybe as a, a regional transport hub, you know, that, that, that's one of the going things in our smart growth. A lot of Maori communities out that way have been volunteering up the MRIs for, you know, parking up cars and, you know, having buses there to, like, like a regional hub to come back this way. And I'm, I'm saying an option is down here for one of those regional transport hubs down here. But again, infrastructure. And I estimate it could be ten to twelve million dollars worth of infrastructure there. And we also have over the road, over the state highway, what they call a residue of the Asha Block. And that's where Gloucester Road is at the moment, like, well, not as yet. You know, and got about, I think it's thirteen hectares. And again, this is going to need ten to twelve million dollars worth of infrastructure. But it can be done, you know, like under the district plan, if you were to look at it as general title, we could get between a hundred and eighty and two hundred and twenty, three, four bedroom papakai. You know, and, and so that infrastructure is pretty vital to, to get there. You know, I'm putting a plug in for Hawkeki and their housing project. That that should be part of what I'm, I'm going to propose here. Because I want to wrap it all up in the city regional deals. Most of us know what that is, you know, and again, it just seems practical, you know. Centering it all up like that, you know, and, and including some of our Hawkeki's developments going on there. We're just starting a spatial planning for the Rangatawa because we've got the Maka titles back there, you know. And again, that's a, a environmental infrastructure. So to me, that can come under that city regional deals thing. You know, and essentially, I'm plugging in, you know, like from the Crown, from the council and, and the regional council and, you know, some of these big infrastructure funders. You know, to invest thirty to forty million dollars on all what I've been talking about. And like I said, I can hear the moaning from the average Joe rate payer right now. But like I said, see, we've contributed to the city. And we're doing it again by, by proposing this, but that's going to cost money and you don't think we're going to pay for it, do you? You know, so I've been looking at the, the government's, you know, their, their new legislations. Local waters done well, city regional deals, you know, all that, all falls into place to me. And it's pretty, Rangi, Rangiruni and those two guys consultants for city regional deals, you know, going around promoting, weren't you, because I gave them an invite. But essentially, when they've gone around, that's my presentation, you know, and I'm, I'm hoping the council has a good look at that, you know, because we're in a strategic position here, you know, really. More than anybody else from where I can see, you know, and we also need our Marae rebuilt. And again, to earthquake standards and again, wrapped up in the city regional deals, you know, like as everybody knows, it costs a bit of money to deconstruct Faranui and then rebuild one. You know, and at our last CTWF meeting, those three consultants that were pushing the city regional deals, they said that they needed Tonga Tofenua and big projects in that, otherwise they were never going to get it for, you know, even though they might have Western Bay, TCC and the Regional Council all hooked up into it. If there's no Tonga Tofenua projects in there, they said they ain't going to get diddly squat. You know, so again, seems practical, you know, like just putting it out there. You know, it's a big project and that's what they were looking for. And that's what I've been driving at, you know, so. I think that's about it. I have to say a big thank you to my cousin Silla. She put this all together for me, you know, I've got here, I go, going around. But hey, that's what you're there for, you know. You know, like, because I couldn't have done, I'm, I'm used to this tech stuff, eh, you know, so. Get out and text me, so. Yeah, I think that's about it, you know. You know, I can't, can't say it enough, you know, I don't want to say it, you know, because I know it hurts ears, you know, like plugging burden for thirty, forty million dollars, you know, of infrastructure and all that, but I think it's, again, practical and it's just sitting there in front of us. So, Kiu ora, thank you very much.
Kiu ora, Kiu ora, Kiu ora. Just a, a big thank you for the order for. It was that good that we're replaying your coridore. So, yeah, really, really good to hear the depth of your knowledge and obviously, I think two meetings ago, we were at just down the road at the stadium, having the presentation from our Hawkeki. Now we're hearing both sides all pretty much in sync, so we thank you and good to see you back, Silla, know my hooki mate, doing all the work in the background. As I say, you know, everyone has their skills and you've got the knowledge and the, the history. So I'll now open up, you're right on time, you're thirty minutes on bang on time too, so. So we're going to allow some time for questions, so the floor is open for any of the members of the committee to ask any questions of. And welcome to, sorry, I should have welcomed to Hawkeapu and councillor Baker and councillor Shula online as well. And just for you guys, I can see you on there, so if you've got a partai, just raise your hand and I'll, I'll bring you in, hopefully our tech is all working. Any partai? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you and thank you for the presentation. Really good to hear it and some of it's very boring, but it's something that needs to keep happening. So you raised a number of issues. Started with the water and then the, the Marae, the needs as an emergency centre. And then some, and some of the technology and then just in general, some infrastructure other. Is there any priority you can put to those, like those are three projects I noted? Is there a priority you maybe would put there?
Yeah, I suppose you could do them one at a time sort of thing, but I packaged it so and wrapped it around that I'm banking on the city regional deal and getting in the, the front line for the, the funding for the infrastructure. Because that's what, that's about getting in the front line and, and easier to get the funding if you're in that city regional deals and, and like I said, they're all important to us, rebuilding our Faranui, you know. But getting the roads up and going and, and I know for a fact the project manager for the new accessway to the, to the reservoir, he wants to get started yesterday. You know, and I know I've proposed the area route to him, but again, I think it's practical, it's easier. Straight road and you're not putting two corners in that around about ninety degree angles for big machinery going up that hill, eh, you know. And I suppose it'll, it'll depend on if we get the funding, you know, in bulk, in full. Get a few things going or just incremental, one, one project at a time, eh, you know. It's about, I hope that sounded your.
Ah, Kiu ora. Viti, that was a good synopsis that you gave of the things that were essential to our Hawkeki. But I guess most of it is, I hope you can all hear me. Was to do with the modern day contemporary stuff. Do you have any claims left over from the Treaty of Waitangi? Settlement claims that have to be finished off in terms of the final settlement for Tama Pa'ori?
For us, just as a whanau, we've got the Kura Kōkiri out there at the Native Land School. I'm the claimer for Y six three six and it's about four acres. That's just sitting there, you know. Because obviously the schools, the kūrās using it. You know, but once they, if they go and go back to Pirirako or in that, like I plan to team up with our Hawkeki. And when they get the curriculum going for education and that, offer the, the site up, you know what I mean? And, and we're collaborating with them because I think when Colin was chair, he approached me. Because that's when they started doing the deal with the MOE, eh, you know, and and I just said to him, well, it's up to Mark, when he goes, Mark Nicholas is the, at, at the Kura there.
There's a Kōkiri block over.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
At the Kura there, yeah.
Kura Kōkiri, yeah. Special, no more than me, if, if our Hawkeki's got any claims left or. Yes, it's only really the Timak, as far as I know.
Yeah, so those ones will go through with the Timak and the Naterani claims for the school properties, et cetera.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other partai, any online partai? There are?
I can see Hawkeapu's got a couple of questions in there.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have to read them out?
Yes, please.
Yep.
As it is, please. So question from Hawkeapu, do we have any constraints for rolling upgrades at the pa? And Ashka, what's your?
We should have lots of numbers.
Good one, eh?
Are you talking about Taraha, eh?
Well, the whole road infrastructure because we're going to, going to need to use it, you know. It should happen, you know what I mean, and, and it needs to be up to spec, eh, you know, like earthquake proof to me, you know, like. And so it'll probably cost to do that, you know, but no, otherwise those holes will just keep on popping up, eh, you know.
Work in progress.
Yeah.
Second question. What work is currently being done in conjunction with the Marae and the Hapu regarding emergency management?
We just started that and Kate and I'm not here, they put, they put me onto as the coordinator for the Marae for that, for that project with Leonie and, yeah, Karoria, yeah.
Well, Leonie and Karoria are here, do you want to give an update on the money that you guys are doing with the Marae?
Oh, I'm like, Kiu ora, right out, eh, Hannah, I'm here because I actually attended the last civil defence emergency hurry that was held on the twenty first of November, myself and Peni. And I attended it, the governor said Papamoa Kura. And one of the elements for those that were present, apart from just the teachers and staff, their concern was the fact that everyone ended up up here that time they had the tsunami in the morning. But the Papamoa Residents Association lead was there as well. And he met some concerns around being able to position pods because they were quite confident that with all of the increased retirement villages along Papamoa, the lack of ability to be able to get up to the hill here. So there was a retirement village representative, the staffing, as well as the Papamoa Residents Association, who've been an ongoing kind of entity as well on behalf of the Papamoa residents. So that emergency management for up here, they had concerns as how do we get up there? What can the Marae provide? And it was just reassurance from Peni McLeod on the day that no one will be turned away from the Marae because we don't do that. There is sufficient kai and supplies up here. However, he did reassure them with regards to there would be a seeking of funding to be able to have those emergency supplies up here in addition to cater for those needs. However, my concern through that hui is that the great of Papamoa, even just weighing, is huge. So that whole response needed to be a more collaborative approach. While I'm here as the red for Haringa Marae, I live on Waikiki Bay Road, but Haringa Marae is also another civil defence location. So between the two Marae, between myself and Peni, it was good to hear their views, but also to reassure them there is no fear about coming to the Marae because we'll always be here, there'll always be papakai here to vote feet. But we're looking at that whole, one week at least. So the communication is, I think, just reassuring our whanau of what those steps are, but being a bit more collaborative in their space with the Papamoa Residents Association alongside the Mangatau.
Yeah, yeah, a, a, yeah, a vital connection for me too was to try and hook up with the, with the schools. You know, getting the children out of there, eh, you know, and part of the strategy is we've got some transportation, like main freight and clouds cranes and all that, you know, that can carry a lot of bodies, oh, I won't say bodies, sorry. You know, a lot of people, eh, you know, and, you know, if we coordinate with the schools, you know, and able to send transport out there to put the kids up, there's a lot of our kids, most of our kids will be down there, you know. And I'd say a lot of our clients who are on Truman Lane, a lot of their kids will be at those schools, so they'll probably be keen to, to engage with that as well, you know. It'll take a lot of, a big coordination, but I think it can be done, you know. Because those visitors down here, down there, you know, you know, like there's a lot of, a lot of people involved there, eh, you know, living close by. And so, you know, knowing that their family and their kids are, are safe, you know what I mean? Like it'd be one big blessing, you know, like. So, you know, like I said, we've got to coordinate with, with all the schools and try and, you know, work something out.
Hawkeapu, you've got a question, hopefully we'll hear you.
Yeah, can you guys hear me all right?
Yep.
I should have been a little more careful with my emergency management question because I'm aware that we are doing my head with the Hapu. My question of staff is, are our intentions with their body of work, do they align with what the Hapu want to see achieved in the emergency management space?
I'm looking down there.
I can say yes from Nātikahu. I can say yes from Nautikahu.
I'm Tātoua Tātoua Kukuru University, and I'm the strategic advisor. I currently sit on the emergency management team, working alongside the Aonis to make sure that our marae are able to prepare in terms of emergency management. So yes, we have been working alongside some of the different marae, mainly marae of Hakafo. We deal mainly with marae, so we have our main marae we work with and those come off the back of the responses and around the site when they go around time, those marae they chose to open up. We've extended that support to other marae who want to get on board it. So that looks like getting alongside each of our marae, seeing what the needs are. Not only that, in terms of offering accessibility reviews, accessibility reports, but also then, that's only half the issue. The other issue that we try to support is accessing the funding to make those alterations, to get that equipment and also aligning with children in the city council. Emergency management team has to also align with the group plan, which of course is evoc and part of that, supporting hapu and marae to be able to be sure. Does that answer the question?
Uh, yep, kind of, and around that way, I mean, it's gonna be something. Projects or ways of work made out by Fiti, whether it be in a short or medium term, do we have that kind of comprehensive man, that Paia Tafu team sorted? Or is this just, are we...
Yeah, no, well, I, I don't think there is. I like, I've been working on this for a while, you know, and, and so I've got it clear in my head. But, uh, yeah, and this is really the first time I've actually, um, sort of engaged with it, you know, and put something together, a bit of a plan, you know, and I think, like you were saying, hey, other marae, I've got to hook up with other marais and get that communication going. So in short, this is my, no, I haven't talked anyway, it's my own plan, bro.
Thank you. Any last questions before we...
Yep. She's going...
Yep.
Who's crunching the numbers? How many people down there? Because we've got forty thousand from down there coming up here. And it's likely in the middle of summer, maybe, at least. So who's crunching the numbers?
I'll ask our chief executive to comment on that one.
That, that's all part of the planning, so, and forty thousand people won't be able to make it to the Maunga. That's right. Yeah.
I, I've thought about that actually, Stephen, you know, and I don't know if we could get forty thousand, you know, packed in along the, you know, the backbone of the whale, you know what I mean? But it's still high enough to have people nowhere near forty thousand, you know. So I have thought about that, that amount of people labor, you know. Because I'm wondering where they're going to the toilet. Yeah, that's another thing, you know, and, hey.
Those were all elements that were brought up with the discussion at the kura with the staff, as well as the Papamoa Resilience Association. It wasn't just the Tākaku and the consistent things. It was the fact that the higher retirement age residents that live along there, they won't leave. They will stay put. And so the retirement village had that emergency plan, that's going to go higher.
Okay. All right, we'll leave that topic there. There's obviously a lot to decipher. Thank you once again, Viti Ora, for your presentation. I think for us driving here as we come along Maunga Tawa, come past the stadium, come past the dump, come past all of the other things that are happening, but also see some of the good things that obviously have happened within the industrial development and plenty more to happen. So I think there's potentially some low hanging fruit that the Takawanga can work through. I think it sort of, we all couldn't probably not see the potholes as we come in, come in here. I know there's certainly some people in Papamoa that are happy, pretty more than happy to divert their asphalt roads to here at the moment. And I think, you know, and those are important, that we do look after some of the low hanging fruit. Some of these things are going to take time. And there's some really good conversation on the emergency management and making sure we've got that plan in place. But thank you, thank you, Viti. I think there's plenty for us to decipher. So turning back to our agenda, we now move to the chairperson's report. And as you know, I am the Voluntold Chairperson today. So I am going to take, take that report as read from our chair, Anthony Fisher. But before I do, I will just probably add in some of the cordial and great to see Viti that you're across a lot that's happening in this place. Local water's done well, the engagement with Tonga Tofinawa, the first hui happened a week or so ago. And I understand it's moving really quickly in terms of that partnership. And, you know, it's a very significant thing that's happening both for Toorang and the wider Western Bay, but particularly for Iwi, so we're pleased to see that. You mentioned the regional deal. Again, big, a massive kopapa going on, particularly around infrastructure and particularly where Maori will ultimately benefit. And I say benefit because we've got to be conscious of growth creates other challenges as well. And then last week, a big announcement on the local government reforms and some particular, well, draft changes to the regional council. Lots to decipher there, but there's some big pieces of work, not to forget that there's a lot just happening in the city, particularly in Te Manawataki or Te Papa, a lot of things happening. The opening of the art gallery and behind that is going to come a lot more. I think as us as fellow councillors, I think we get invited to an opening every, every second date. Acknowledged councillor Shula, our man, go to man for our openings. But there's a lot of things happening in the, in the city and a lot of positive things happening as well. Sad to see, obviously, the recent drowning that it's, that has been acknowledged in this, in this report. But I suppose I just wanted to sort of cover a few of the things that are, that are really importantly happening. And the only way we can do that is in a partnership. And, and last thing I'll mention is there's a full blown review of the partnership with Iwi, with Tonga Tofina, with hapu going forward. That's far ranging, that's, I guess, again, done in partnership through externals. And I think we all know that all of these things are timely. And it's not that things aren't going well, but we think that we can do things even better. So I just wanted to, given, I was given the opportunity to be the chair, gave me an opportunity to share a few, few things, take the liberty of that. But on that note, I will ask that the chair's report be moved. Can I have a mover, please, Viti Ora? Deputy Mayor, all those in favor, say aye. Any against? Carried. So now we move to the report from the chair of the Terangapu, I think is my next item on the agenda. So Kaya Kue Matare.
Kewa stetipu, kewa tafano. In front of you is my report, but I won't read it word by word. I do have a couple of things just in support of Viti Ora's presentation. As one is around the regional deals. There have been two workshops held with the combined Tonga Tofina forum just the last couple of weeks. And they have been, I wouldn't say well attended, but they've been attended. And I think that there's going to be some more hui happening next year. And really what it is, what they were trying to pursue, there's two negotiators. There's Chris Jovlin and Rangi Mari Ririnui. Rangi is actually the Tonga Tofina negotiator on that team. And then there was Timothy Allen, who is CEO, no, not CEO, but he's actually with Priority One in that space. Yeah, so that presentation was really around getting Tonga Tofina, Maori Land Trust to prepare themselves and get themselves ready. There is already some projects that likely to be underway by next year. So those are being negotiated as, at the moment. But that's why I mean that we need to come together quite often and how we're going to prepare ourselves for the next regional deal, project, which could likely be Papakainga. So, yeah, that's, I just wanted to share that. The other one too is that for Maunga Tawa Papamoa blocks is, I don't know if you're aware, but there is also an incursion, an insect incursion biological threat. And it's the yellow legged hornet. And that can actually kill off our honeybees. And every orchard are reliant on the honeybees. And so I just want to make sure that, and I guess it's the communication thing that we all need to be involved in, especially with all orchard owners, all orchard owners. I wouldn't say just Maori. And there's also a health issue as well, this thing is really bad. So I just want to put that on the table today, just to make you aware that there is some support out there. I've seen a couple of articles in the Bay of Plenty Times, just sort of giving warning to people that are around us, yellow legged hornet, and just how bad they actually will be in terms of the economy for Aotearoa. So I just wanted to raise that. Just an update in terms of the local water's done well. We had a good turnout hui at Armitage on the twentieth of November. And from there, a small team got together to start progressing the Tonga Tofina partnership group. And emails and communications have been sent out to just about everybody that I know, or most of yous that are on our list. You're either involved in Iwi leaders or you're either involved in the partnership forums of councils. You're either involved as a Maori Land Trust trustee or somewhere in between a Tonga Tofina entity. So due to time constraints, we had to quickly pull something together to try and get the, I guess, the membership for the Tonga Tofina partnership forum. Myself and Spencer and Kylie and Hakupa, we're the small team that pulled together. And there was a call for expressions of interest from people out there who fit the criteria around understanding, you know, about the Tiriti of Waingi, obviously, and treaty settlements, local treaty settlements, strategic thinking and influence, Mahtouranga and Te Panga Maori, cultural knowledge, kaiteaki tanga, commitment to guardianship of way and finua, communication skills, ability to engage effectively, analytical and critical thinking, governance and management, knowledge of legislation and regulations, familiar with our local government water services act twenty twenty five, environmental law and compliance framework, understanding of infrastructure, environmental management and capacity and availability, ability to commit time and energy to this role. So this is, this is the group that come together with the Tooranga District City Council and the Western Bay District Council. So that's where that partnership, that joint partnership is being established. So this group is actually looking at the establishment planning, planning until, it's four months, only four months of this, four months until March twenty twenty six. And then from there, they're also looking at due diligence and planning for the next step, which will be the actual water services organization. Correct me if I'm wrong, please, Maori, you know. But anyway, just to give you a bit of a heads up is that the selection committee had selected out of ten applicants. I can't give you all the names, it's actually confidential, but I can give you the results. But anyway, the selection panel was Rion Turnau, who represented the Kahwe Manafina o Toorang Mone, Western Bay. Chair of Te Ihu o Te Wako o Te Arawa was Petera Tapsel. And Chair of Terangapu was me. Ngai Iwi o Toorang Mone Collective was Charlie Rahiri. Ngai Iwi o Te Tau Ihu o Te Arawa was Ray. We have the, you guys can, you know, just jump in when you're ready. So we, the call that went out on the twenty third of November, that's why I'm talking about how fast things have been moving at pace and to advise Iwi hapu Tonga Tofina forums on processing candidates' requirements. So the expressions of interest went out. Confirmation of selection panel that I've just named was done the next day. Expressions of interest, Thursday, the twenty seventh of November, they closed. Candidates submitted an expression that outlines their suitability for the Tonga Tofina partnership group based on the selection criteria that I've just read out. Review of applicants that was done on the twenty eighth, between the twenty eighth and first, the review was actually done on the first. So we came together and we went through those ten applicants. So the appointments was also confirmed on that day and candidates were advised that day. The ones that were not successful were advised this morning. So, yeah, that work has been done. And so I guess their first job for the Tonga Tofina partnership group is a meet and greet this afternoon at three o'clock. And so gonna take them through what is, is going to be happening for the next, well, schedule for the next four months, I guess, and, yeah, what the expectations are. So that was pretty fast before we got there. And there, there's four candidates, oh, no, four, sorry, six, take that back. The Toorang Mone Iwi Collective appointed Kailis Mormon to be one of them. Te Ihu o Te Tau Ihu o Te Arawa Waka, they appointed... Hakopa, yeah, Hakopa. And the other four is Juana Bennett, Rohario Murray, Chad Rolleston. Oh, I've forgotten the other one already. Kiritapu, sorry, Kiritapu Allen. So that's the result of the, that partnership forum. So that's the update on that one.
Just, yeah, and the local water's done well. On my presentation, I've mentioned stage two of the Waari. And I'll go a bit further and talk about equity or service where that pipeline is going to service. It'll, it'll be, it's going to be running past or parallel with probably five hundred acres of Maori land without servicing it, you know, coming along and going to feed this reservoir up here. And just, I'd like the, the, the ones you just mentioned, just to maybe have a look at it, you know what I mean? And I know it'll take an engineering solution, again, of some millions of dollars to be able to send that water out to smaller sections and all of that, eh? But, you know, again, it's a main water line, going to go running straight past or over under Maori land and not even want to service it. So just a path I suppose.
I think we just note that, that's something obviously that should be put in the mix with the group. I don't think we have any members that you named here today, but that group obviously will come back to the constituents for the, for the, for the corridor. Anything else, Matere, from your report?
On the National Maori Housing Conference that was held in Waingi on the twenty second of October. We've got two delegates that attended that hui, so between kura and destiny, they'll be able to give an update. Kura.
Kewa tāhiake, mē mē atu ki o tatafana ki ngapuina ratai pākatui te ne. Hui tau mata, me hui mo tata kato te moti ne. So the Maori Housing Conference was a two day conference with breakout sessions, having heaps of depth expertise in the areas to do with Papakainga Maori housing. We had a start on the twentieth, it was a, ended on the twenty second. Me pōnōtaku, I thought maybe... Meepono Taku, I thought maybe, evaluation sheets haven't come out, by the way, for us to actually write our thoughts on the evaluation. I thought all the kōpapa were awesome, because there was some awesome keynote speakers there. I'm just gonna quickly run through my notes, because my laptop went bung, so I had to restart again. But however, so what I'm saying is, the breakout sessions on day one, it was about growing and providing excellence. And what that was about was about building the capacity and the resilience of sustainable Maori housing. And it was for organisations, organisations, and it was like through sustainable funding, workforce and development and shared resources. And also all the keynote speakers, like I said, Tohunga in their own right, because they're depth and they're experts of the field. So we had like the likes of Christine Panapa and Nokunaya. So when she done her court roll, she actually says, "No, Ngati Pukanga." So they're alone whanau, tap into your own whanau that actually has all these expertise and can help with the vision and the aspirations that the people want to, want to head to. So she was actually involved in the Te Mahuri Hure, she's the Te Mahuri Hure Marae Society Chairperson. And she's also well-known for her housing ability, because she led a major, major project and was award-winning, by the way. And was Te Toomata or Kupi complex, if we all know whanau. It's that fourteen-unit marae. And then it was all about housing development. And also, at the same time, she was championing about Maori housing, education and sport. So I reckon. She was also joined with the likes of Darren Smith, who was from Poihakena, Australia. So he came in to talk about all the differences, the similarities, where you can go, where you should not go, I'm gonna try and be as quick as I can, about the Aboriginal housing in Victoria. So as I'm talking, you can see, well, there was actually a lot of experts up there, if it was structured in the right way, so that everyone can hear everybody talk rather than having to go all over the place. But however, then we had Tamatishepet Wepeha, he's the, am I saying it right? Wepehi? He is the CEO with Ngati Hene Health. Also, we had Manihira Maihi, I'm probably just gonna say their names, for Mata Huru Huru, and then we had Desrae Charri. So they all joined in on discussions with, with participants with us, with, what do I say? Yeah, us as the Kaifakarongo. So they took that part. And then we also had, another kōpapa was about accessible housing. I'm gonna be real fast as I can. And that was about how to close the gaps in accessing, for accessible housing. I think what I'm saying is, we've heard these stories, there's kōpapa over and over again, but however, it's good to hear it in a different way and how it may not work and may work for different Finua Maori trusts. Also, they talked about how collective action that's needed for future proof, so homes and for whanau, especially for those that are disabled. So they were championing that side about disability, homes for our disabled whanau, and how they could all come together, which we do that anyway, and thrive, and it becomes like a universal kind of a design, and it's safe for the katwa. So I'm just gonna hareritunut. So they had like speakers like Rondell Baker, we've got our own Rondell here, then we've got Kevin Anderson and Ellen Morneha, and they all like are directors and co-directors and CEOs to do with disability and housing. Then there was another kōpapa, was about realising the potential of Finua Maori. It was about Fakufanona Tonga and Action, which was more about mahitahi, kotahi tange, get on with it, work together, someone does approve, mutnumasaid and hareritunut. Oh, in a nice way, by the way. It was about finding effective strategies to connect with the kāwana, like what we do, strengthening relationships between Maori housing providers, which is not a new story, about crown agencies. And most of all, it was about ensuring that the Maori voices shape the policy and the funding decisions. So that was Te Raratara. That was done by Karen Verco, Janie Tintin, I can't say name. And then she was also of the Deputy Chair of Tooranga Otoa Rangatira. Just to say that, we had a Araro Tangata Housing Conference, and it was a pity that we had, well, memehika kea rato na whanau pani kona tangana kua harikirotu te roho Tooranga Moana, because they took our numbers down. Because Uncle Helmet, he's now an uncle, he actually came and gave a real inspirational court roll about housing development, and how to recycle energy and waste, and it would have been good for a lot of our whanau to hear that. And he's also of Toa Rangatira, from, it was about his Porirua block. Anyway, hareritunut. Do you wanna jump in? Then kind of on day two, it was about capital with purpose, it was about financing pathways to do with community-led housing. So it was about how we can be innovative, you know, here we go, saying the same old court roll, about values-aligned financing models, unlocking housing potential solutions, and to be driven, of course, culturally grounded, sustainable, because there's a growing demand for affordable housing, it's not a new story here. And it's also about the need for to be flexible long-term investments, and strategies are more urged, and also they identified then that strategies are probably more urgent than ever. How are our strategies going? Although taki pants. And it was joined by quite a few of panellists, I won't go there, because there's quite a few to name. Then there was another workshop on co-design for Papakaianga. And that was about, it was just how can we show, how can we show whanau, how can we make the collective decisions and guide participants through co-designing, because we're all about co-designing, and about the development and consent process. That was mainly about what that kōpapa was. And it was joined by Jade Kake and Kitty and McKinnon. So they're actually of Matukohi Architecture and Urbanisation, so they actually are registered architecture and Maori housing researcher entity. And so of course, it's befitting that they'd be there. And then there was also a workshop, a far around Tai Tamariki housing initiatives. It's about, you know how we go about succession and rangatahi, well, it's about actually housing solutions designed and for rangatahi who are exploring those initiative pathways. Because our rangatahi actually are heading in those areas, eharakotata anahe. And then also about how do they address the affordability, it's all about affordability, here we go again, and the access and support for our rangatahi. Then also it's about highlighting models that will fakamanu empower our rangatahi to build secure futures, whilst staying connected, of course, iwaingu te haupuria te hapu. So I'm gonna end it there, because it was quite a lot of court roll. But like I said, if it was structured and formatted in the ideal way, so that everybody that attended could have actually heard all the important court roll, because you can't have to choose, but I think that's how a conference goes. And I think what they didn't have there was the actual successful stories of the ones of the Hokaianga that actually lived right there, to actually hear them, so we could throw the questions there. Otherwise, koeina taku, but I think Destiny might have some more to add. Oh, yes, you can do that.
Some of the friends have a look at this Papakaianga. One of them was a third generational Papakaianga. Another one was a woman's refuge that had one, two, three, four houses in a gated community, just as you go into Kaikuahe. And the other one was about three storeys high, eh, which was on the other side of town. But I just wanna mention too, that a place in Utukura, which is in the Huapianga, just opened up their Papakaianga development just the other day as well. So there's a lot of Papakaianga developments happening from Waitangi throughout to the Huapianga, to Ngati Hene and up to Kaia. So it was a different type of conference, and that Maori's been handed over to the east coast, so in two years' time, it'll be over in Tefanawa Apunui, near, which is out towards the Kaikuahe. And they've got big developments happening out there.
And they were celebrating a new initiative of about a hundred mill housing somewhere up there.
Any partai for any of the presenters? If there are no questions, the resolution is to receive the report, Te Rangapu Manafino Tooranga Moana Report, December 2025. Could I have a mover? That move, Mairete, seconded by Deputy Mayor. All those in favour, say aye. Aye, carried. Okay.
Sorry, I have an apology, I've got a garrum on my, on my online conference around the hornets.
Kapai, I'm just gonna check with our, in terms of quorum, how are we?
Quorum?
Yeah, we've got, we've just given it up.
Seven?
Okay, no one else to leave? No one else to leave? Okay. We have got the Tanga de Finua presentation update. Karen Paiko, Kiafui, Karen?
Kaua partai. Namibini kākoko. Yeah, our report today, I'm not Caroline, I'm. In the issues table, because the things that was asked for in twenty-two have had all been done. So we're gonna put Mangatau back in the list. I have written what I think fifty's issues were that he raised, so all of those things that you talked about this morning will end up in this issues table. I did note that there is a red one in here, so I thought I might just talk to that, and that's Mangat, Waymappu. So when we went to Waymappu in February of twenty-three, they asked for a number of things around lighting and speed bumps and a footpath and some other things to help down at Waymappu. Most of those things have all been done. The only thing that we haven't been able to progress, which is, which is red, and we don't sort of have our way forward around that, is around the footpath. And that's due to some drainage issues, I believe, that need to be fixed first, and it's quite, yeah, it's a budgeting issue as well as what on understanding. So that's why that's red. However, we are still talking to them about, you know, other funding opportunities to try and progress some of, progress that last issue around the footpath. I think that's, that's all I'm gonna talk to. Any, any questions around anything in the report? There was quite a number of issues from our last hui, or matters that were raised by Nahtama Rahu, we're tipping away at those. I think Hemi and Katsua Rolleston and Prowa met with some of the whanau at Nahtama Rahu yesterday. So yeah, still lots of huis in front, happening.
Just as a question, are they, the order of them, is that, because the dates are quite odd, I was sort of thinking that the new ones would go on either to the front or the back, but they just, there doesn't seem to be an order, and I just, as a, if we are improving it, to have the number of the issue in the first, like as a new little column, then rather than say page thirty-eight, it's got a red, we could actually say issue number, just as, to make it a bit easier. But I just, I was not quite sure what, what order they came in. Okay?
We'll do that. At the moment, because they, so we've been to a number of these, of marae, a couple of times, so we've clustered them, they were in date order before. But because, just to make it eas, easy to find them, so you'll see Petera Hema is there twice, we've been to Waero twice, we've sort of clustered them together in that way, but I will number them, so that we can find them easier.
And I just think if you, whatever you write between now and the next one, if it's in red, then we can see what's progressed, what the update is.
Yeah.
Could I ask partai about, you talked about some things have been done? So where do we see those? Are they green? No, green's on track.
Yeah, green is on track.
Where's the ones that, you just talked around that tunnel at the last one, and it's done, so are we, is there a list, do they just fall off?
They fall off.
I think it'd be useful to have a list of the things, because that are actually complete, because that's really what we really wanna, you know, ideally, that's the, to me, sort of green normally means complete, but green's sort of still saying on track. So I'd, I'd think it'll be good to see a schedule of those things that have been done. Yeah. Any other partai?
And just again, on the accountability, which I think is really good, spaces and places to everyone might not mean TCC. So you've got TCC legal, but not TCC spaces and cases, so just.
And if there aren't any more comments, oh, there are.
So just, just one comment here. I guess further to what we talked about last time, as this is a really long list, and, you know, we do wanna make progress, everyone wants to make progress, so do we set a, once a year, we go through and put some priorities, you know, so that we can say that's, that is actually getting the priority, you know, when we are, when we're going into the long-term plan, which we will start talking about in February, but we're already talking about it, that, that needs to be in action, that, that's happening, and something we want to do is to have some guidance for how you submit to a long-term plan, so that we, because we did in our first time looking at the annual plan, we recognised that we as councillors receive submissions in different ways, and so we wanna make sure that people know the best way to put a submission forward. And so it's something we've talked about, whether there's some, some sort of training ground of, of how to put a submission, but I think it's really important that these are linked to, you know, a lot of them are linked to funding, and that is the annual plan and long-term plan, so perhaps to have a session at the next of these meetings and say, okay, what, where are, where are we actioning those? What, what can we do to make sure that one's ahead of another or not? I don't, I don't know, I can't say that, but it's a long list, and we want to make it a really proactive list. And so I, I need some helpers to say how we're gonna do that. And Maori, that's, I'm just leaving that as probably an action for you and Karen, to say, how might we find a way to do some, a workshop on progressing, or on status quo and long-term plan and where things are going, would be, I think, really useful.
I think there's an action there for staff to come back with a, a plan as to how to do that, rather than say, let's have a workshop, or let's, I think there's an action to take that as a, as a, a work in progress to come back. And I think you've got the parity from, you know, the message from the Deputy Mayor, and it's something that I definitely endorse, because the shopping list is just getting bigger, and then there's a lot going on, so there's a workaround how we might prioritise it, how we might reset it going, going forward. Is that compliant with you? Any comment, Maori?
Yes, so I think what we should do is, as part of any annual plan or long-term plan processes, go through this list and have a discussion about prioritisation and trying to expedite some of these things. Otherwise, we're reliant on various marae or hapu or Iwi to make submissions, as opposed to the fact that we already have the requests here. And so we bring these to life through those funding rounds.
I think it would be helpful, it would help, we could first of all, put our issues into priority order. And then date them. There's something, there's one here that we've got, which has been going since the Harbour Bridge was built.
Oh, that was in eighty-four to ninety-one? Eighty-four to ninety-one, that was?
It's gonna be passed on to my grandchildren.
There's no, there's no recognition, recognition in here of how big they are, like, are these are, is this a hundred thousand or a hundred million? That, and that sometimes you have to start saying, well, you know, let's actually make sure some get off the list if we can, you know, manage that, so.
Kapai, thank you.
It's four mil.
Is it back then? They're not making those dollars, are they?
That's the interest that took every day.
councillor Shula, you got your hand up online?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Chair?
Yes.
You just, could you start from your, you're going Deputy Mayor, but, and you may wanna talk about it briefly, but I, I think for me, following our meeting yesterday with Nahtama Rahu, with just looking at options for the Urapar, they're obviously, I think, past capacity on the island, and given how long that process could take in terms of sourcing and finding land and going through a process, then some, that should definitely be given some relatively urgent prioritisation, I would think.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks councillor Shula, I think their message is quite.